Well, I think the problem is, like, having some flexibility to talk about 14,000, 15,000 for retail, it creates a new parking address. If the building footprint does change, and it's not, uh, approaching, uh, the target, there's a variation of the design behavior, then, uh, we'll know that, uh, that it's going to change, uh, if it's, uh, if it's, uh, straightened out, but, yeah, uh, five points of the issue is that, that change will not necessarily come back to work with the, uh, fine behaviors or, uh, or barriers, but, uh...
More than that.
Uh, maybe put some cap on that, uh, also, uh, I'm just looking at it, and it's more interior quality is great, and, you know, probably thousands where, if you're using that quality, you don't necessarily have to go on any way, or barriers, or something like that, that anything you can implement still needs to be minimized in the nature of, uh...
Well, whereas, whereas, right, I thought the milk tradition is that you have to have to allow fifty thousand square feet of these, uh, and then as you stand fifty thousand square feet, not giving away doors, and windows, but they have to, uh, do it.
Well, it's like, would you, would you, did it straighten it, uh, mine?
Uh...
Uh... If the project was, oh, yes, three thousand square foot, uh, the potential difference in the project, if there's only, there are no more than, um, no more than sixteen hundred, where if the footprint changed that magnitude, and that the app, uh, uh, could, could best their building make all changes, uh, in the way, in terms of, uh, sort of, uh, the, uh, how they, uh, how they, uh, uh...
Um, that the, uh, if, if dollars were reported, possible variations, uh, were reported, that how many were taken, how many were excluded, uh, of that, uh, of changing what's, uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, maximum, uh, for this, uh...
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Well, I haven't read it.
I apologize. Thank you for considering. I'll stick along for that, my time on the site later. With regards to the site layout, not much has changed from our preliminary approval of supposedly one large U-shaped building, which varies in height according to fourteen stories along northern property line, four stories adjacent to Union Street on the western property line, and a six-story portion along southern property line. The talks now to propose a single-floor pavilion within a large plaza area. This plaza area will include the full campus university as well as the general public. The plaza area has some amenities, including a large video screen, uh, sixteen feet by twenty-eight feet, which will be along the northern edge of the north of the pavilion. Um, this large end of the plaza will be an anchor place for students, for the community, and create a net gap for the city of New Brunswick. When we're looking at the site layout, there were three issues that, uh, we tried to really consider in our design. The first issue, the ultimate safety, for, 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 in that area, realized pure harm of our students traveling across College Avenue. The main thoroughfareers who was coming to College Avenue should know that they weren't ever reached out to a bunch of others who would end up being reconstructed on completion of our project in a moment simultaneously. That movement comes down from north, comes from south, and right now, there's just a bated crosswalk, which is rarely, whenever you, by, by your students, it's more of just a mass transition across the street. So, what we were hoping to do is really start to delineate this crosswalk, where and how that street will go into occur. Uh, we're going to be gaining a twenty-foot-wide crosswalk across College Avenue, and additionally, we're proposing signage, uh, we stop here for pedestrian variety, and more importantly, we're proposing a stop art in the street to alert vehicles, not only to just crosswalk them, but where to stop, and use pedestrians in the crosswalk. Uh, we're also proposing some in-street signage, to again, give the particular users a second warning about pedestrians crossing in that area. There was a comment from Tom Golden, uh, regarding the College Avenue, Hamilton Street, and Union Street, Hamilton Street intersection. Uh, our application proposes a single handicap ramp, and it should be scored, um, and if we could, we'd double ramp, meaning we have a ramp for the north-south crosswalk, and also for the west crosswalk. Uh, we have no objection to that, uh, and as a result, when the project is completed, we will be restructuring these crosswalks at both of those intersections. The second component that we, have we emphasized on the site about loading requirements in the redevelopment plan, uh, the intent of the plan was to minimize, eliminate the potential for details, uh, loading from the streets impacting traffic. Uh, what we're proposing is a one-way service drive. Union Street is one-way today, north-south, we're proposing a service drive, also one-way from west to east, along the northern property line. And the service drive is designed to accommodate box truck-sized vehicles, and we anticipate it will be used for the majority, the strong majority, all retail deliveries and the access drivers in design. So, we'd have one vehicle pull up to a receiving area, and then we'll have a vehicle with enough clearance to pass by, and then out to College Avenue. We don't anticipate a large amount of deliveries for retail use. During our technical review meeting with the city, the issue was raised about those thoroughfare occasions where the movement day, or it's the first week where we have doors opening for large loading occasions, but it makes sense to try to buy some form of alternative method, too, if the truck department, or, or, had to exceed it slightly. So, what we discussed was a stretched-out loading zone, uh, Union Street, uh, the eastern side of the street, just to be used in those thoroughfairs when a large truck would be provided, whether it's the site we covered, so the next secondary option, to keep any potential loading from College Avenue or Hamilton Street off the vehicles. Those are too many roads for pedestrians, for, for traffic, and to keep trucks up there, I think that's beneficial to everyone. So, the last topic, and, uh, as I mentioned previously, the notice of unparking on site, requiring those to the redevelopment plan, to avoid that, because the loading less than twenty thousand, certainly retail, if you are, uh, if you're having that, uh, two thousand now, and fifty percent of that retail is really worth walking up the ride, or the restaurant convenience, or, there's no on-site parking in the park. And the rest of it has a, is important, because you're soon including here, the majority of them are using the registered plus network, and users are standard of retail, will park at nearby, be able to park nearby. Want any, any questions on site layout, before I touch on the landscaping issue? Okay. We are proposing variety, landscape plantings on the site, and we want plus areas, A3, A4. Uh, I'll call it, you're, uh, for more. We're proposing tree planting along... We're proposing plantings, pre-plantings along all the major roadways, along College Avenue, Hamilton Street, Union Street, and also variety plantings within the plaza area. Uh, along College Avenue, we're proposing Princeton Elm tree, if you can see here, that puts over, I'll also mark it as A4. Pre-planting plants. Along Hamilton Street, we're proposing Southeast Oak Tree. Along Union Street, we will be proposing Willow, and if the books are into the site, we'll be proposing South Round Tree. Within the plaza area, the main tree type will be tree board, and we also have the large lawn area, five trees. Looking back very briefly upon that material type, I think it's A3, we're proposing in the plaza. All of the hardscape outside, the site is in the grayway, will be concrete, so it's examined once we get on board site, and then we'll do, the lamp concrete, favorites of decorative variety, and then we're looking at white gray, hardscape, and red and orange plaza there. We're also proposing a ski wall in the southeast corner of the plaza, with a grand ski wall, and for the wood decking area adjacent to the western edge of the plaza, uh, you can see here. One of the components or factors of the redevelopment plan is the large amount of the seating types we propose in public places, which we're accommodating by, some J. Lam do, uh, on the wood deck area, and multiple pipes receiving. In addition to the ski wall, we have different, uh, floor chairs and living chairs, which will help support the walk-up, the development. I think the last thing I'll touch on before we start, some questions, please, the lighting. Along the street, we're proposing standard, like, through the university, light fixtures, which is what you see on College Avenue today, the St. Berthold, with an architectural lighting fixture and the Red Bull banner. And if we move on to the site a little bit, um, the lighting picture too varied, we have column lighting along College Avenue and Hamilton Street. We have some mounted pictures within the plaza area, and then when you get down to the southern portion of the plaza, we're actually proposing cable mounting lights, although if you look up, similar to, you can't even find a fence example, but if you look up, you see the light fixtures hanging from the cable areas. And other than that, I don't think it's worth me jumping into this whole, uh, rehabilitation or, or, specific question.
Well, your testimony, um, the summary application, uh, for, uh, you said, uh, so forth, very substantially the same, or, or changes that have been done, other than what's been recommended by the city engineering department?
Probably, uh, great as well, or, uh, for, uh, the building's knowledge, uh...
Going to the, uh, department?
We will work with the, uh, government, if you have any concerns you have.
I just wanted to question, there was a comment with respect to pedestrian movement, and I know you, we discussed briefly pedestrian movement, and that's been taking emphasis on College Avenue, and I also think that there's a common question, if you're, to also, to, 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 uh, to, uh, to protect.
The biggest thing we're going to do at, also, is have, uh, the city, uh, we have a crosswalk, uh, visible at this point, and we will be putting in a new, a new, uh, line and, uh, to, uh, for, uh, all of the users right now, all the crosswalks may have been served to realize, uh, if a ramp stand up, or if it has to be, uh, uh, very, uh, easy to take.
And again, I don't know if these are, uh, some comments I must be building, which would be, uh, the, uh, handling ways, uh, within the right of way? I mean, if we could just, uh, uh, do that?
Sure. So, the comment was, uh, city's not allowed, and I think it's in the right of way, we're proposing a thirty main plant, uh, to, uh, to, uh, the, uh, the, uh, here. I don't think the app can, or I know the app is not, uh, of preference, but if the city, like, if they're willing to plant, it's, uh, fine, if they want to be, uh, on the park. Um, the reason we're proposing truly a set of reasons, I have said it all, with the main, uh, with the, uh, they, they, uh, they...
So, with respect to the app, so, we, we're not the app that provides, or, or, this is, or, has it here, do you think it's, uh, in the absence, uh, meaning, the, the department, properly indicated in the right of way, or it's not, uh, to be sponsored that, or, this is, really, uh...
Is that landscaping affected in any way, or, does pedestrian easily trample over it? Do they give, like, any, easy travel over it? I think, uh, I'll, I'll suggest, I'll suggest, like, that, uh, if you have experience with that, on, 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 uh, on, uh, that, and it, uh, went to trash, and it, it trampled and, uh, I've been over that intersection a lot, a lot, we, uh, we, uh, a large volume of, uh, 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 people, uh, you just, uh, probably, uh, putting out, just, uh, uh, last, uh, or, 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 uh, or, uh...
Okay. No, but, uh, I, uh, uh, I, uh, I, uh, I, uh...
So, what about the existing parking, I mentioned, uh, something earlier. So, we did have some undercover, consistent parking zone, that we do, uh, our staff, in the back, we own our site, and, uh, staffs off the site, we still, uh, relocated, uh, we still, uh, 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 how they were located. All of the working staff, previous to part, at Lottie, they shifted to the northern surface lines, along College Avenue, thanks to the College Avenue, and there's, of course, uh, uh, left. All of the staff that use the market code block, they shifted, or, they don't, it's like, tidied, but moved, uh, to the north, to the, to the old club, and all that, and College Avenue, parking deck at the northeast corner of Hampton, uh, Rutgers, that, uh, at, uh, the, uh, and, uh, and evaluating the situation to ensure that parking still has, they're all passive, um, northern part of school, and no point did the College Avenue garage be open, and, uh, going to teach here, people should try that, uh, Thursday classes, so, uh, level and half, hopefully, uh, uh...
You know that movement, uh, prevents the, uh, uh, uh...
Correct.
Uh, I have another question, uh, 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 what, so, we're moving, uh, 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 and, uh, with all public, what's proposed, you know, like, talking about?
They're not, uh, yet, they're very, yeah, they're, uh, that's, uh, 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 probably, uh, 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 correct.
You know, if, if, uh, the, uh, 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 uh...
I would think so, I don't know if Frank has any comments on it. Frank, you bring the rest, and it's, uh, by, uh, 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 this is the intent for the university to landscape, uh, street, in College Avenue, uh, to, uh, 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 so, at some point, uh, fund, uh, uh, make available to, to, to that project.
If there's planning to go back, uh, 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 this file, and those files, uh, 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 uh...
Can you see College Avenue, uh, one floor, and you want to treat it, uh, one, one back, uh, 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 uh?
Chris, are those, uh, proposed findings, uh, in the, uh, 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 uh? Are they in the, uh, uh?
There is, uh, landscaping, uh, including, uh, Steve Stone, uh, Imperial, uh?
Yeah, so, uh, 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 uh...
I do not think you have a plan, uh, of course. You have mine. You have mine. So, it wasn't, uh, 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 uh,[1536.81] uh, that invites weather the days like today, uh, spill out onto that courtyard. There are two pavilion buildings, uh, and the pavilion buildings, uh, I'll show you in a moment, are really intended to be objects in that space. And what I mean by that is, uh, while these buildings, this is fourteen stories, six stories, four stories, and six stories, uh, they, they're, they quite regularly define that. These are real objects, they have, uh, lots of shapes to them, uh, they're five inch material copper clad buildings, and they're intended to be almost follows in that space. But act, but, uh, functional, uh, active, uh, food and beverage or retail kinds of pavilions. Beyond the retail tenants, there are, uh, the entrances to the residential here and here, and common amenities for all of the residences above me. Lounge space, uh, fitness space, bicycle, uh, laundry, common laundry space, there's bicycle storage, and then all of the building back of house. I'm going to label A seven as the second floor plan. And on A seven, you can see, uh, the relationship of that court and the elevators to a common corridor, and elevators to a common corridor, and then the layout of the individual units there. Primarily four bedroom units, uh, but there are also one, two, and three bedroom units, uh, as well. You'll notice that on floors two, three, and four, these don't connect. Meaning there's a core and corridor, and core and corridor. Our goal is to cut down the length of corridors, uh, create a more neighborhood, uh, scale, uh, living arrangement to make that community that's often a single corridor, uh, and there's a real sense of identity and ownership of that space. And then, uh, last plan is a typical upper floor plan above level five, I'll label that A eight. And you can see the north building and the south building, this goes to fourteen stories, this to six stories, this dropped off to four stories, uh, and so they each have their own individual cores. Egress there is the operating of a separate building. Again, the overall goal is break down the scale, keep the component parts, and take that consistently through the entire design process. So what you'll, you will see in our perspective is, it will treat them as three separate components surrounding this space, uh, in the kind of division of, uh, important urban spaces that, uh, have a, have a defined edges of, of multiple buildings, a kind of assembly of buildings. I'm gonna go to two renderings. I'm gonna label the first rendering from College Avenue, A nine. And, uh, this is a view from the southeast corner of college. And, uh, Hamilton, you're looking across college into that courtyard space. The six story building to the left, the fourteen story building to the right, uh, and the four story building beyond. And you can just see these, that, uh, copper clad buildings. Our goal here is really two-fold. Uh, one, to create a kind of separate identity for each building. They are always supposed that they are all clad, uh, primarily clad in terracotta. Uh, that gives the ability that needs to be organized and material of diversity. Terracotta like, um, these, uh, fire, uh, uh, really clay potter, uh, will, will have a certain amount of diversity in those pieces of terracotta, like some of the pieces right there, type bricks. Uh, and we see a texture and a, and a color pattern, uh, on, on the opposite side of college, um, along Borges and, uh, at Old Queens. It's made up of red brick, it's made up of brown stone, uh, it's made up of a great diversity of these kind of materials. Primarily, when you walk Borges, when you walk over college, the memory is, uh, red bricks, brown bricks, brown stone. And that's what we're getting at here, that there is red, what I'll call red terracotta. You know, red terracotta is really kind of a burnt red-orange kind of color, uh, a kind of beige terracotta on the west side of the taller building. On the south building, uh, a brownish kind of terracotta, and it's called Moka, between the same color, uh, light colored pattern of, of, of brownstone. Uh, and then the kind, the, the space between the four story building, between, um, actually kind of used as a separator, uh, is, is metal clad, as is this small common space up on the second floor. The ground floor is, um, primarily glass, it's a lot of glass. And transparency, one of the retail restaurants that spill out onto the sidewalk, activate the sidewalk, and they want a lot of visibility in. They want to create, they want to create those active urban edges. And so what we're really trying to do, again, is both in the massing, in the material palette, in the color selection, create this kind of assembly of parts. And so we take what is pretty big building, 237, for each, uh, and break it down so that it is more similar to the pattern of surrounding the buildings on, on, uh, on New York City's campus. And then one more perspective, and I will label this A ten. And this is a view into the courtyard. So I'm walking down college, I'm looking into that courtyard. Uh, you can see the pavilion buildings, uh, sixteen by twenty eight screen, uh, and then the six story building, the four story building, and the fourteen story building. And again, that transparency, glassiness of the ground floor around, all the way around inside the courtyard, as well as out on the perimeter edges. Uh, the intent of this, uh, is really to become a focal point, to become a place, uh, that's a gathering place, that's a kind of common ground, uh, where there's both informal events and more formal events, a programmable kind of space, uh, for all sorts of events. That takes advantage of the fact that it's surrounded by, uh, these different food offerings. You can see in the far end of that space, what I call the amenity space, where the fitness lounge and, and, uh, lodging facilities for the residents work, these walls being, being operable, meaning there are kind of overhead doors that can open up, and so the inside can kind of spill out. I can walk you around a series of elevations, and I'll only do two, because I think they get kind of boring after a while. Um, I'll do the elevation of college, and I will label this A eleven. Uh, and again, you can see along college, you can see the three different heights, fourteen stories, four stories, six stories. You can see the transparency of the base. You can see a sense of orientation as well, uh, onto college. College really giving the address of the buildings, uh, more visibility to be back, um, to the, to the, uh, historic campus, and a real sense of orientation to college. And then one more, I'll do the elevation of Union and, well, and I, I will label this A twelve. Uh, and again, now I just kind of reversed the parts of six, four, and fourteen stories. The whole point of showing you this is, um, we go back, no real back sides to these buildings. They can have material palette, which is a kind of rich, uh, terracotta material palette. Wrapped it all the way around the building, so, uh, while clearly using the front door on this building, uh, will get a lot of visibility from around, uh, and I attempted to take that thing calling to, uh, maybe to the power, all the way around. Think I'll stop there during the next college question, uh, five, two.
Can you do a, um, can you, a couple of questions, can you, uh, any questions? So, we had another question. Uh, that's a good part, please, please.
Stay behind, sorry, we gotta, we gotta call him.
Um, will the traffic signal at College and Hamilton be upgraded as part of this project? That, um...
Uh, can you repeat the question?
I'm sorry, the question was, will the traffic signal at College Ave and Hamilton be upgraded as part of the project, or? It is not, for right now.
No.
There's a proposal room, protection crosswalk, driver's parking signal timing, and stuff like that, nothing.
No upgrade over the head head, really, not that?
No, not at all.
Uh, I have another question, um, you said on college, there were gonna be stop bars for the crosswalks. Does that mean there's gonna be stop signs as well?
Yeah, what it is, is that, I'm pulling my exhibit, so I can. Where we have the stop bar, the one thing we noticed, and I'm sure if you've been out there recently, so in that break, you'll see it, is that vehicles drive on so quick, and then they need to crosswalk and slam on the brakes. So with these stop bars, right next to you is the stop bars, there's a large stop here, pedestrian signs, an arrow pointing to the stop bar. And here, if we keep the vehicles, I hear it's about two feet back, and through the side, this is a little further, it's about twenty-five feet back. If you get them starting here to stop, there's less of a chance of, you know, slight oversteer.
But it's not an actual stop, sorry.
Correct. Okay, so it's one of those, it's one of those signs that if you just see a pedestrian, you stop here. By itself, it is not a stop sign.
Um, and then the last question is, um, you know, this is obviously gonna be a very important site, a lot of pedestrian traffic, uh, so already a pedestrian heavy site. Has there been, you know, adequate consideration of, are there enough pedestrians? Are the sidewalks really wide enough?
There were sidewalk requirements, uh, part of the three thousand plan, there's a minimum sidewalk width, having the twelve point five feet on hand on the street, uh, on College Ave, uh, these ten. Local number, there, you know, a lot of foot or two. But we are meeting all requirements, all three thousand plan, by active sidewalk width. Now, we're viewing the point, because we have a college avenue sidewalk that has an arrow, and you start to see a little overscale. By providing the streetscape that is used up in the middle of College Ave, to provide much wider walkways for students to walk. The last thing, what, that we've seen a little bit last few weeks, students walking, you know, people out. But that's in there.
Yeah, my only concern is, you know, there's those trees there, so that takes away a little bit of your capacity, and then, you know, it's already, you're already forming the bed, and a lot of the retail, it's gonna be tight.
Okay, you can go.
Twelve crashers, they are, uh, people, people.
He's in the board of the public, um, I've got a few questions, uh, wanted to ask. Uh, I know originally when this, uh, one of the plans presented with parking lines, it's a park. Is that still something to pursue? Or is that not still? It is going on the parking. So there won't be any parking proposed, I think. Okay, and, uh, I wanted to ask, I guess, uh, um, about the, the status of that bus stop, that area currently, and how it's gonna be during construction? Because I know, um, I, I personally, it's a lot of force, but the situation there is much worse than it was last year, and it wasn't great last year either. Um, I know there's a lot of barricades, and the sidewalk is completely closed, and I know that, uh, whoever, you know, the decision, the university probably, we, we take down that, it's a bus stop replacement with a much smaller, uh, much, uh, you know, there's practically, uh, but, 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 um, so what's, what's the plan? This is gonna be a three-year construction project, um, how are we gonna make sure that people are safe there? And how are we gonna make sure that there's enough space to, to, to block them out there?
Here, when we first introduced the pedestrian pattern, it takes a while, we've seen that before, frankly, for, uh, about eight years, and it does take a week for students to adjust. Um, as soon as you set up barriers, it gets came back, uh, I believe it was Tuesday, and you're out there Tuesday. It was a little bit of confusion, a lot of freshmen, some of them, didn't really know what they were doing. Um, DEFCO is out there every day, monitoring the situation. Um, if you've checked in and over this day, you see we have made some major modifications. For example, um, and I should give some credit to, to, uh, Tom Building, some patterns, and they're kind of, meet us out there, and go over some pedestrian pattern. Originally, our intent was, since we're doing a large scale building here, we wanted to minimize the amount of pedestrians coming in adjacent, just for safety purposes. Uh, however, as we started to look at this more, um, I think it just didn't seem, it wasn't what we would want it to. But it's, it's college students, I'd say, I don't know, probably ninety, ninety-five percent of college students, what they're supposed to be doing, will follow that pattern, and there's still those five percent, ten percent that, you know, will do anything, what we're seeing was, their pedestrians aren't walking College Ave, and it just became too much of a risk. So if you're out there today, you'll notice about mid-afternoon, this existing sidewalk is reopened to pedestrians. Um, we're still working through the process, um, developing the best trade-off between keeping the students away from the construction site, while also providing safe pedestrian lanes for the students to sort of utilize College Ave. Um, I guess we'll go, you had some questions about the bus stop too specifically?
No, absolutely.
One of the changes we're gonna incorporate after a meeting with the city, uh, on the bus stop. This bus stop will remain open throughout construction. Um, your term crappy was probably fairly reasonable. Um, the bus shelter will remain here, but we also are gonna increase the length of the sidewalk area. And one issue that we noticed, uh, for being outside, was the way the buses were pulling up. They weren't pulling up right through the station, they were pulling up past the station, right through the crosswalk. And what that issue was causing, and the city kind of made us aware of this, was as the pedestrians were coming out across the street, the vehicle was being blinded by the buses, who were very defensive acting there. So we'll see in the coming days, we're actually striking out a bus zone, which is that twenty feet back from the crosswalk, to minimize the potential for a vehicle being strung by a bus, potentially impacting pedestrians. And it was a little old, but that, anyway, just a question. I think, I think the biggest thing too is, we encourage these pedestrians, college students, for that first week. I think it's a sort of trial and error, so we, you have some rationale, put these plans together. We actually get the kids out there to see the sheer volume, too. I know I myself, I'm like, and please tell me when I was out there, I thought I knew this somebody, right? And you, I could see the volume of students out there, and started making, you know, kind of remember, that, you know, it's a little, it's a little, it's a little.
So just to follow up, the sidewalks are gonna be open for, for the future, for two months?
For, for at least the next two months, that's what I would do.
I get that one.
If I understand, it's gonna be open, but you're gonna start getting underway with construction there. And, uh, then you have some, you have construction entrance that come down there. There are some, uh, pedestrian safety considerations that have to be considered. But, uh, I think we've all met out there, and, uh, what we need to protect pedestrians, and that's, we're gonna need on that side of the street. If I understand, so, whole construction, the way that that side will be open, and then we'll do some, uh, changes, uh, and how that works, we're gonna have construction, don't want people, uh, crossing the construction entrance, so that, that's, uh, safe.
Well, thank you, I'm glad you, let's go on top of that, uh, you know, I think, I think it's really important that that particular intersection be, as much as I love it.
I, I would say, I think that Belgrade and Luthers, uh, is often, the city brought up, uh, students come back, it's all aligned, all those questions that were, um, out there, that, uh, from the, 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 uh, gap, you know, what the reality was that, that, uh, was, and really, uh, 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 through the, 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 you know, as, uh, the, the, uh, initially, the floor plan, the floor grid was likely to reality, the gap, what that reality is, and I think it's, uh, very, very well, but you had, you know, it's, uh,
Thank you very much for the invitation.
Thank you very much for the information.
Our next project, college and Hamilton, we're developing a token, L and P. We got Southern University, S thirty-one, S two zero one three, S zero four. Section thirty-one has a standard interior, so it's actually a structure building, for Rutgers, at the University, located at Block ninety-four, on sixteen zero five, five zero line, in Port Huron, Washington, Jersey, and those are the I and dash one. College and Hamilton, we're developing area one.
Yes, members of Board of Council also, once again, on behalf of the applicant. This application before you is, we treat it differently, in that this is a section thirty-one master plan review. It's not a site plan application, but we bring this before you. I find us, on behalf of Rutgers University, as we designate the developer of the project. So, we're what we call, that you had previously granted a section thirty-one review support back at the same time we issued, by April, we completed. And we move forward with that application since. There have been changes, however, to how the project is being laid out, changes that are most average, result of communication between the university, their needs, their expectations. And of course, us to have to come back to you, to re-review for master plan compliance, and hopefully, to receive your support for section thirty-one review. Again, this does involve the development of the Rutgers University academic building, and the university on college, on Seminary Place. The project is substantially the same in what is proposed, and what the intent of the project is, where it's located, how it will function. But a reconfiguration of the building, and some of the buildings on-site, the board is to come back, and you can have your support for those changes. My expectation is, is that we just have the architect, as the architect, we will provide some comments, some of the precomments in this building that ask, and these questions that are asked, and go into some of these landscaping, which we will attempt to answer your question. I do have with you this evening, Mr. Paul Capta, a BSN project engineer. But there are really no engineering changes to speak of in this plan from previous. So, it's not my intent to fault his weakness. But for you to know that he is here, it means that we need to have engineering questions answered. Please prepare to answer. So, unless there's any questions to yourself, I would like to go to Mr. David McFerrin.
David McFerrin, can I, um, are you there?
I guess that I recommend we should have the previously, um, section credentials in the last application, and previously in the section thirty-one. Dave, why don't you give us a brief overview of the plan, briefly analyze it for the members of our board here before, and talk about those changes, the basis, the, from the full process behind, and why we've been making changes.
Let me give you an overall orientation, and I'll call this Site Plan A one.
A one, with an advocate.
And just give you some orientation, George Street, Seminary Place, and Bishop. And as you recall, this is really a once-in-a-generation kind of opportunity for the university to connect the old Queens College campus, Borges Mall, with the North Campus, and all of the buildings of the last generation. Really to take this site, make it the active passageway, the extension of Borges, across Seminary, through these two different parts of the academic building, beyond to that North Campus. And then, to create an Honors College for approximately five hundred students in a residential setting. And I'll hit you through those plans in a moment. And then, additional landscape in the site to the north, between the proposed buildings and Bishop Place. As you recall, there is significant grade change, approximately thirty feet of grade change from the toe at Seminary to the top of the hill of Overcome, Rutgers Oval. And so, I'll go first through the academic building. The academic building programmatically provides approximately twenty-five hundred feet, more than twenty-five hundred feet, in lecture halls, classrooms, different sizes, as well as seminaries. And in addition, creates two floors of faculty office space. The building actually is broken into two parts. In order to create this open passageway through those two parts, it's entered at the bottom, at what I'll call elevation fifty-two, approximately elevation fifty-two. You move up through the building, and a kind of mid-elevation at about seventy-two, and then finally, up to the top at Rutgers Oval, at approximately eighty-two. The point being, use the building, or the program of the building, as this kind of bridge between south and north. As the site plan has evolved, some specifics that were the source of a couple of questions. There's an existing crosswalk here, on the west side of Borges. We propose a second crosswalk on the east side of Borges. Obviously, this is going to become a main stream of student, pedestrian traffic through campus. We propose hardscape out to the curb between those two crosswalks, simply because of the volume of pedestrian traffic, and the concern that any sort of grass planting will absolutely get trampled in that dimension. And then, there's a series of outdoor walkway steps that bring you up through the site. The, staying with the site, accessibility is provided by several different means. You can come into the building, and there's a separate core, elevator core, on each side of that building. That elevator core not only brings you to every floor in the building, it also brings you to the top of the hill. There's also the opportunity, there's a, and I'll go through this in a moment, in Honors College, you can go into this building without having to have full access into the entire building, reach a dedicated elevator that brings you up onto this grade, and then all of this is new, that accessible. And then, there's a fully outdoor view. You can cross the street, there's a ramp that comes up and around, all fully accessible at less than five percent slope to reach all the way up to this. So, there's actually four different routes, one that's outside, and all ramped, the other three, which are supplemented with elevators. So, to make that bridge, maybe about thirty feet from south to north. You can see all of the landscape plants, meaning all of the treescape, our landscape architect, our research associates from New York. And a series of very similar landscapes there, is what we talked about on Marty. The Princeton American Elms, the two different species of oak trees on George and on Bishop. Tighter spacing, about twenty-five foot spacing on Seminary, with large openings, where we could space most pedestrian traffic. And about forty foot spacing on George and on Bishop. But you can see a very intense concentration of landscape everywhere. The opportunity to create a series of kind of plateaus, where classrooms can spill out in the academic building, and then more passive and recreational kind of spaces to the north. Nothing to show you the academic building, two renderings. This is a view, and I will label this view A two. This is a view from Seminary. You are at the top of Borges Mall, or the north end...